We just come to you tonight, just thank you for the opportunity to come before you to discuss the business of the citizens here with Clay County, your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have here, obviously everybody in the middle knows Sheriff Daniels, Sheriff of Clay County, Sheriff's Office. We have Chief McKenney over Investigations. Lieutenant Alexander who's over Narcotics. To the left of Sheriff Daniels is Chief Richard Elkins over Patrol. Next to him we have Kenny Stivers, Chief of Special Operations. And next to him we have Pat Galini, Assistant Chief over Community Affairs. I thank them for all being here as well, that way we make sure that we have the information that we want to get out. One of the first questions here, it says, "Why should I section orders for the meeting?" I'll go ahead and address that, I think I addressed it in my opening comments. Again, we understand that sometimes what we do and what we plan here at the Sheriff's Office, it is sometimes on a late notice. But I can assure you, and the panel can feel free to jump in if they would like when I get done, we do the best that we can making sure that we get the notices out. Again, trying to have something centrally located, we didn't want to use our Middleburg operation substation, we wanted somewhere that's in your community, getting them to answer back, which they do the best that they can, obviously these things are sometimes run by volunteers, that we try to get everything lined up, trying to get the personnel here that we need to make sure that any concerns that are rolled up are addressed. So again, we apologize if it was a short notice to some, but you can reach out to us anytime, I promise you. You don't have to wait on a town hall forum or a town hall meeting, if you have a serious legitimate concern, we have a lot of avenues out there that Sheriff Daniels has started, to see something, say something, you can pick up the phone, call us, leave any of us a message, call us on our department cell phones, and we will do our best, I promise you, to make sure we get back to you in a timely manner and get you any information that you would like. So hopefully that addresses the concern of the short notice meeting, we got out as soon as we could, once we got confirmation of what we, when we knew that we had the facility available. The next question, open up to the panel. "We live on Eagles Nest Lane in Middleburg off of Long Bay. We observed a major problem with drug activity, including a high traffic and multiple non-residents in our neighborhood. This has been reported to the substation on numerous occasions, but it seems to be picking up a little bit heavily. How or what can we do to assist or give more information to the Sheriff's Office to make sure they have the information that they need?"
Well, one of the ways you can report is online, we have online reporting. We should be able to get the information if you go by the substation, and a lot of this information you're gonna get, that we do get, you just may not see us, our guys are undercover guys, and you may not see us all the time while we're in your neighborhood or watching the house, and sometimes these investigations take an extended period of time. Some of the stuff in the Middleburg area that we've had going on lately, is we've had at the Middleburg Express operation for about the last three months, during that operation, we've targeted some known drug areas and some of the complaints that we've had, and we're kind of moving all over Middleburg, a lot of it is centered around Clayville at this point, and I'll give you a couple, just a couple of stats. During the last three months, we've worked that operation for eighteen days, assorted days during the operation, the deputies from all the different units at the Sheriff's Office, made four hundred seventy-two traffic stops, and out of that, ninety-eight drug arrests during that time. So if we're out there, you may not see us, but we are working those complaints that you get.
Just to add to that, if you're seeing something like that, or you have that neighborhood, there are several ways you can report to us now. Our website is a great opportunity, you can go on there, you can actually have a form that's specific to drug activity, because there are some things we want to ask, some specific details, you can remain anonymous, it's totally anonymous, you can go on there and just give us as much, I would ask that you give us as much detail as you can about what you're seeing, the vehicles that are coming and going, if you know who they are that's doing the dealing, or you know, if they're users, what the situation may be, because sometimes that depends on who I send that to, whether it be a street level unit or a higher level unit, depending on what that person's doing, dealing, or they're just using drugs and having parties out there, that would be another group that we send to address that problem. So the more details you give us, but the website's the way you can do that, you're always free to stop by our substations or call us and ask to talk to a detective directly, if you'd like to speak to the narcotics detective directly, which is always a big help to us, because we can ask a lot of questions, and sometimes we already know about the individual, we can get some clarifying stuff. So in all means, make us aware of those, we are addressing, sometimes it does, like Lieutenant Alexander said, sometimes it does take months for us to get into the house or to get the person that's coming and going from the house.
Thank you. Before I respond, there's a few folks in the audience who I'd like to recognize, and you know, I apologize for not doing that. On the front end, there's a couple of elected officials here, and they're supposed to actually run into a political office, and in fairness to them, they need to be recognized as well. First being Judge Christina Mowley, up here up front. Also Commissioner Gavin Rollins, down in the audience. Smitty Huffman, I see back there, he's running for county commission. And Judge Sapp is running for Congress. Did I miss anybody? Okay, I'm kind of an old fashioned guy, I may not look like it, but the most simplistic way to convey information about what's going on in your neighborhood, or any area of concern in Clay County, is just pick up the phone and call the Sheriff's Office and say, hey, you know, whether you want to give your name or not, just call and say, "I want to give this information, I think something's going on in my neighborhood, can you guys come out and take a look?" You're never gonna offend the folks who work for the Clay County Sheriff's Office, that's what you pay us to do, and if it's a concern to you, then it's a concern to us, and you're never gonna, you know, be bothering us, if you will, to call us out there. One of the reasons that I wanted to have this town hall meeting, you know, some say, "Well, he had this meeting because, you know, somebody pushed him into this meeting." I just said, "I want to have a town hall meeting in Middleburg." We had a town hall meeting in a week, barely anybody showed up, like ten people, but I said, "Let's have a town hall meeting in Middleburg." I mean, I'm getting complaints in about drugs, I'm getting complaints in about the way we're addressing the drugs, so it's a catch-22. Folks say, you know, "You're not out here," and then when you come out here, they say, "Well, I don't like the way you're doing business out here." So it's kind of a catch-22, but you gotta walk that fine line, and folks, we're your Sheriff's Office, it's us that are providing the service, and if you feel like there's an area of concern that's not being addressed by the Sheriff's Office, and should be, you're the taxpayer, you pay the bills, and we have to be responsive to y'all, self included. But one thing I don't have to do is respond on social media, and I see a bunch of stuff going on on social media, and I'm like, maybe I'll provide a forum for them face to face, so that they can share some of the things that they got going on with us face to face, that way, there's nothing, no hidden agendas, and folks can hear the question and hear the response, and nobody can skew that, nobody can say, "No, Sheriff said this," or "Somebody from the Sheriff's Office said that," no, the question was A and B, and we responded A and B, that's why we're recording, so that we have an historical archived record of this meeting and the questions that come up from this meeting, that anybody, if we're recording it, that means you get access to it as well. I know my guys are like, "Oh Lord, he didn't open that up," but if you want a copy of this, my guys will make it available for you, won't y'all?
Yes, sir.
Say again?
It's on YouTube.
So he said it'll be on YouTube for you to download, so it's live, it's kind of the down and dirty. Can you look up? It's kind of the down and dirty, and you know, I wanted to make sure that we have a forum that was respectful and professional, but you know what, nothing's off limits, and the moderator gave the ground rules and said, you know, "It should be specific to these areas." I don't want to open up the door to just any old type of question, because we'd be here just talking in circles at some point, but if it's something of concern to you, and you hadn't been provided a card, and you want, if that thing asked, and you want an answer, then by God we'll give you an answer. So pick up the phone if you have an area of concern, there, you can text the Sheriff's Office, you can send it in on our website, whatever you need to do, if anything's shot up coming face to face, if you don't feel like traveling, you can do it, and we have to, have to be responsive, and if we're not being responsive, then that's my business, and my business to rectify. Is that fair enough? Thank you, Sheriff. The next question, Chief McKenney, I'm gonna direct at you, this technically is a question for the State Attorney's Office, but I think you have an answer for them. It says, "Why are we allowing the State Attorney's Office to identify our drug offenders?"
I'm not sure what they mean by identify with drug offenders. Can we clarify, who asked our questions, or?
They actually used the word pimp out, so I'm trying to get you an answer.
Why are we allowing the State Attorney's Office to, y'all arrest somebody for drug activity, and it's sort of put in a sentence and let them stay in jail, the State Attorney uses them as a pimp, pimp them out? And they don't, and the guys aren't turned into a high profile guy, they're turned into little low guys, that they ain't worried about. Why are we allowing them to do that? Why are we just putting them in jail and letting them be?
Well, there's some very strict guidelines on who we're allowed to turn into a confidential informant, I think is what you're asking about. We have very specific rules in Narcotics, Lieutenant Alexander, back this up, we don't target the user so much, we target, who we target is someone who makes a living, and I've said this time and time again in our meetings, we're gonna target the individuals that make a living selling drugs, that means they don't work, they just sell dope, and that's how they make their money. Now, what does happen sometime, I'm gonna say, we never get the user, because sometimes you do, sometimes that guy calls them up, says, "Hey, I'll sell you some weed," and we're gonna, we're not gonna turn away from it, because sometimes that user turns up somebody bigger, so that's always an opportunity for someone to be, you know, turn into confidential informant. I will say it's very difficult though, to do that, it's not, when somebody gets charged with that, they have to say, it's got to be some, it's pretty substantial that they can do, but we will release them from jail and turn them into a confidential informant, but then they still face the charges that they're facing with. So yes, we try to avoid the users, that's not something that we target or go after, but sometimes they just can't help it, and they jump in there often, so we also can't turn our eyes away from someone who wants to break the law, whether it be twenty grams of marijuana, or you know, fifty pounds of methamphetamine, I'm gonna target anything that wants to sell to us, we'll buy it, and then we'll arrest them. Hopefully, sometimes that's not a bad thing, because sometimes that lower level user is not gonna get serious prison time, and hopefully that can be that high where he needs to get back on his straight and narrow, and get away from doing what he's doing.
Yeah. Can I elaborate? At least what they're looking for here. Let me elaborate, so by show of hands, anybody think we got drug, any kind of drug problems in Clay County? So that is a resource or a tool in our toolbox to utilize, to help get rid of some of the drug activity, and let me, as the Sheriff, the head of the agency, I will leverage any resource, any tool, any methodology, any strategy to rid Clay County of not only drugs, but any kind of criminal activity, and you may think it's all talk, I walk when I talk, and I can stand toe to toe with a drug dealer face to face, we can take it out like men, or we can do it professionally inside, doesn't make me any kind of never mind whatsoever, and I know I'm being recorded so they can hold me to it, but I'll tell you this, you may say, "Oh, it sounds, it sounds..." You're looking at a man, not a kid, the bad guys know the difference, and if there's a bad guy in here, stand up, and we can put it to the test right now, and show the people. But what I'm saying is, we will leverage, yeah, y'all wanna see some kind of fistfight? Get kind of older, I'm older than you. But we will leverage any tool that we have at our disposal to rid the county, really the bottom line, the end game is to rid this county of criminal activity. Will we ever do it? We'll always be chasing our tails, but as long as we're striving to do that, I think we're moving in the right direction, and I think it's a good utilization of the resources that you pay for, you pay for the resources, which tax dollars, and if the masses said, "Well, we don't want you doing that," then we won't do it, but I think by show of hands, people think we got a problem, they want us to do whatever we have to do, we're to rid this county of that problem. There's some, there's some spillover from other counties, and we're trying to draw a hard line on that spillover, I'll give you an example. How many heard, well, you don't have to show hands, so recently in the news, there was some discussion about some gang members who got killed in Jacksonville. Well, a couple of those guys live in Clay County. Well, I told my guys, "Look at here, there may be some leftovers of those guys, make sure they get the message that we don't want here, Clay County's closed." Closed for business, when it comes to that. So two people got arrested over the weekend from that little gang, and the rest of them, I'm told, some moved to Georgia, some to Alabama, and some to Jacksonville, I don't really care where they grew, but I just want them to get out of here, and here's my, here's my concern, and you say, "Man, that's a hard line to take," well, here's the concern, somebody from Jacksonville, I believe, killed them boys, and followed them to the location that they killed them. Well, if they followed them from Clay County, I suspect that these guys probably want to get some payback in Jacksonville, and the next thing that will happen is somebody's gonna come into Clay County and break some foolishness. So I'm trying to mitigate that from the folks, like sitting in this room, trying to keep that foolishness from your lives, because my guys are always standing up and ready to stand that line, and we'll hold the line, but if we can mitigate certain things, predictable is preventable, if I can predict that it'll happen, and if you can predict that it'll happen, then we can put measures into place to prevent it from happening, or at least minimize its impact on Clay County. So those are some of the things that are going on, there's a lot of things that go on that you have no idea about what's happening, there's men and women who work in an undercover capacity, who put their lives in serious danger to keep you safe, you'll never ever hear about, you'll never hear about the fruits of their labor, because we don't publicize everything. Like, we didn't publicize the four kilos of straight, uncut meth, not fentanyl, but fentanyl from Mexico that we got in the drug bust here, or the fifty-five thousand dollars that was attached to that, or the trafficking amount of heroin, same person that wasn't in Middleburg, but from the island, of all places. There is no area that is just the bad side of town, it's everywhere, and it's not just in Clay County, it's all around us, it's all around this country, and so far being from us, the Sheriff's Office, not to draw the line, and say, "You know what, there are certain things in Clay County you're just not gonna tolerate," and guess what, if it puts me at odds with you to do that, then it just puts me at odds with you. I say that to the common folks, I'll say that to the elected officials, and I have, I say, "I'll be jumped if I give one inch of Clay County away, even if it puts me at odds with an elected official," and it is what it is. So, there you have it. Thank you, Sheriff. All right, the next question is somebody's event, so we're gonna go ahead and discuss this and throw it on the table. Says, "Who was paid for tonight's event of the police office here tonight, nineteen cars? How much is this costing us?" Well, I'll go ahead and start this off. Number one, we've got about nine or ten numbers, my last count, that are from the command staff of Sheriff Daniels. We adjust our hours, when we know that he has these types of events that are coming up, we make sure that we plan accordingly, just as you would at your home, because we are very prudal, because it's not our dollars, it's your dollars, and Sheriff Daniels wants us to be very prudal with those, and treat them as such, and we do. So we make sure that we have these types of events coming, we adjust our hours, some of the guys are just coming home, they flex out their time, and they come out a little bit later, and start their shift, to where we keep the cost at a minimum. I'm not saying there may be one or two here that's gonna go over maybe their eight hour day, but we plan accordingly, and we adjust those hours, and make sure that we minimize the cost to the taxpayers. If anybody else would like to expound on that, then we'll do that.
You did a good job.
So again, I can assure you that, yes, we have to answer to you, we also have to answer that man in the middle, and we have to be very prudal and make sure that we're being mindful of those kind of things. So hopefully that answers your question. The next two questions I'm gonna combine, Chief Stivers, it's about speeding, they're wanting to know about the area on two fifteen, specifically State Road twenty-one and County Road two fifteen, seems to be an increase where people are passing in the W L lines, and is there anything that they can do to maybe minimize that or address it?
Well, I was almost late tonight, because I stopped two people passing on the W L line, and then I had to call somebody to bring me a ticket, so, yeah, I live on two fifteen, folks, I get it, I've got our traffic guys out there, but you know, we've got other areas that are kind of undercover, so we have to kind of divide our time. That's a dangerous roadway, if you pass on a W L line, again, I stopped two cars, they went from this county, they were going for SARC, passed on a W L line, and then they were speeding, so we're working it, you know, the influx of traffic from Camp Landing and SARC over to Middleburg is busy at certain times of the day, we try to get our traffic officers out there at the busiest times. It seems though, that somebody's passing on a W L line when there's only three cars out there, and there's just two impatient standing out, and that guy wants to drop the speed limit, so we're working on it as best we can, like I said, I live on two fifteen, so it's of great importance to me, because my family brought that road, it says yours, and the weekends as well, going out to the bay, so through the lake, so rest assured, we're working, if you, if you're out there, you live on that road, you're driving on that road, don't hesitate to call us when you see it happen, give a description of the vehicle, we probably have a traffic officer or a beat officer somewhere in the area to address it, and then you can catch up to them. So it's difficult for us to do our job without your help, so we would ask that you try and call and give us as much information as you can, so we can hopefully get that stopped. But we are gonna work some operations out there to try to target those guys in the end of those times of days.
I guess I'll be chiming in on everything, and you would expect that, right? There's a finite amount of traffic guys out there, and there's a finite amount of patrol assets out there as well, but one thing you have the ability to do is call and make a traffic complaint. So when you make this traffic complaint, somebody writes that down, and it gets distributed to be on a roll call and read out at the patrol, and then also, Chief Stivers is a bunch, the traffic guys, will take that on, take that complaint on, and actually address it and work it. So if you have an area of town, I feel like after I make this statement, business is gonna pick up on the traffic, but look at it like this, and this is how we look at it, look at it like this, it's your Sheriff's Office, we belong, we work for you, so if you say, "There's a problem here, and this is the type of problem that I'm having here, y'all need to do something about it," then we, we're obligated, we have to do something about it, and so if you make that type of complaint, and one hasn't been made tonight, and you don't see any action within a reasonable timeframe, then you call up and you ask me personally. I'm not gonna be upset with you if you do that, but I can tell you, I'm gonna be upset with somebody, because somebody dropped the ball, or a process is all wrong if you didn't see any results of that complaint, does that make sense? So I'm inviting you, it doesn't have to be a traffic complaint, it could be suspicious activity, it could be anything that you think is a concern to you, and if we work, if you just picture us as a tool in your toolbox, the Sheriff's Office, as a tool in your toolbox, that you can use to keep yourself safe when you so choose, you just pick up the phone and you use us, and you guys have a word that we will be responsive to, that's what we're supposed to be doing. Thank you, Sheriff. All right, with everybody that's here tonight, that's all the questions that we had submitted on the car, is there anything related to the topics that we disclosed at the beginning that you feel like were an answer, that you thought about, that you'd like to reach out to the panel? You've got them here now, so now's the time to ask, yes ma'am?
When you talk about CIs, and are very well educated about the use of CIs, one of the things that I've noticed is, what do you do to protect them, because I've seen in arrest reports, CI numbers, which should be confidential, I realize Florida's a different state from where I come from, but when you're giving CI numbers, which should be very proprietary and not open to everybody in the department, let alone, I've seen arrest reports, and personally identified from information about who brought the detectives to the property where the drugs were dealing, that jeopardizes those individuals' safety, their lives, and it makes it, when I read something like that, as much as you stated, well, those undercover officers who were on some arrows, CIs, really need to be treated in that capacity instead of jeopardizing them.
Any other thing, question? So she spoke about what she called CIs, which is an acronym for confidential informant, and maintaining the confidentiality of those people's identification with respect to how we share their information in arrests and booking reports and other documents, and how she has personally seen where the CIs, confidential informants are assigned a number, and instead of being called Darrell Daniels, the CI is called CI number one. So anywhere in the report, we would say, "CI number one provides certain such information." There are accreditation standards that drive the parameters of how we, how we keep those confidential informances' information confidential, how their actual biographical information is stored out, and what controls are in place to keep those things confidential. That is what, that's the impetus for our policies and procedures that we utilize in Sheriff's Office, I'm not just using this, I'm not just, you're doing this off the top of my head, I'm actually the Vice Chair of Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation Association, so those standards are kind of part of who I am, I've been doing that since two thousand and three, and those are the policies, the actual best practices that drive how law enforcement agencies in the state of Florida do certain things. You know, you may ask yourself, "Well, why do they do this when they pull somebody on a traffic stop or, or why do they write the reports like that?" Because there are certain standards that drive how we do business. One of those things is, one of those standards is, when you have a, it's a pretty long standard, when you have a confidential informant, that you do give a, assign them a number, and that if you are referencing that person's input into a case, that you do utilize that number, so in the state of Florida, the standard actually drives us to do it that way, because we can't say that Darrell Daniels gave us information, because Darrell Daniels might get killed somewhere down the road, because somebody else is gonna pull that public document, and once they see that name, they're already, they know who they're gonna get there. Nobody will know who CI number one is, because there's only a couple of people who's privy to that information. So I know that the Chief wants to elaborate on this, this is a wheelhouse, but I just have to speak to that, because it's something that I'm familiar with. I've worked with many CIs over the course of, geez, at least twenty-five years, served several search warrants, and been the person who has, has been the applicant in those search warrants, so I know how to use CIs, I know how CI work works, and a CI doesn't do you any good if you can't keep their information confidential, because you want to get somebody killed, namely them, and then they don't benefit anybody.
Yes, just the second, we said there's very limited access, so if anyone, when we give that number to a confidential informant, there's Armored, myself, and Lieutenant here, there's only, I think, two other people that have access to that room, that can go and hook to those forms, massive sergeants of our company, so very limited access to who can see that name attached to that number. We do everything we can to try to keep that information, there are times that once either those two court members get tried, there are certain disclosure rules that you have to follow, and that's when the state turns off, simply leave the system, and even after that, but we try to keep that information as limited as possible, and the state turns off very good, working with us and trying to keep that information. There are times that we can't keep that from going out in discovery to a defense murder or something of that nature, but we do try to protect it whatever way we can, we make sure that any confidential informant that's working with us is very aware of all the standards and all the things that will take place, and it is on a voluntary basis, we don't make people do that, that is something they are voluntary to do, we make sure that they understand everything that could or could not happen while we're going through that process, we do try to protect it.
That kind of goes along with, when you mentioned about the tip line, I can tell you firsthand, I've submitted things on the Sheriff's website tip line, as well as FCC as First Coast Crime Stoppers. First Coast Crime Stoppers didn't want to keep bothering with information, even though it says, "Please continue to submit information," it's like gives you user ID and password. On the Sheriff's website, your website, I had somebody look through public records, put two and two together, to identify who I was, and calling me and saying, "Are you the one that submitted the tip?" That doesn't make me feel very comfortable when somebody's violating your own confidentiality policy.
I agree with you offline, unless you submitted an email, or you submitted your name as part of the complaint, there's no way for us to really track that down versus, you know, through our website, I mean, that's totally a non-essential, now sometimes there's some information in there, like an email, or when you, be careful if you submit one or you submit an email.
It wasn't by email, it wasn't by email, they went through dispatch records, and they should have...
Was there a telephone number provided in that?
Not in the tip.
If you provided something in the tip, other than that, I run a crime analysis unit, we don't go looking for, uh, if you submitted it.
Okay, if involved in respect, I can prove that it happened.
I'll get with you offline, and we'll talk about it.
I'll get with you offline and we'll talk about it. Unless you submitted a phone number or something, maybe inadvertently there was something in there, we will try to call you and get some additional details sometimes.
The response is to respond via that tip line. It is an electronic communication, respond back and forth instead of.
Our, our tip line does not allow for us to respond back. Crime Stoppers does have a means to.
No, I can get a response.
We have, to my knowledge, we don't have an ability to respond to unless you provide an email or text.
I did res, no, again, there's user IDs and passwords, that was a response.
I'll get with you offline and we'll discuss that. If it was done improperly, we'll address that and make that, or that's not a problem anymore.
And let me add something to that. So given information on the tip line is not, does not make you a confidential informant. A confidential informant has to fill out the application to be a confidential informant. They have to, there's, there's a regiment of things that have paperwork files that have to be completed before that person becomes a confidential informant. A citizen who provides information anonymously is a citizen who's providing information anonymously. Now, I'd say, I'll go, I'll go on record and say this, anytime you have electronic format or electronic means of conveying information, there's always an ability for somebody, not this guy, to backdoor that information or hack that information and, and maybe get something. There are protocols in place to prevent that from happening, but nothing is foolproof.
No, I understand that, but people associate anonymity and confidentiality also, especially when it comes to tip lines.
So what she said was, she said people associate confidentiality with anonymity. Those are two different things. So a citizen who provides information and says, well, I don't want you to have my name. So if you call, for example, if you call nine-one-one and you say, look, it sounds like my neighbor's beating the mess out of, out of somebody over there. I don't want to give you any information, don't use my callback number, don't use my name, but you need to send somebody over there, that's an anonymous tip. A confidential informant is somebody who goes on record and fills out information and says, I want to assist you on a recurring basis on doing something. That's a confidential informant.
I know the difference between them, but again, it's just a topic. Oh, thank you. But it is the confidentiality that people do expect, you know, are anonymous on tip line that says completely confidential, you can submit these things. When you, FCCS, which is part of your tip line, takes the information initially and they're like, well, I submitted it, I can be sure, can you just submit it directly? That's a conflict. They shouldn't be rejecting any of the information.
I apologize, I'll make sure she, the folks get the microphone so you can hear them. She said a whole lot, talked about third-party convey information to the sheriff's office.
First Coast Crime Stoppers.
First Coast Crime Stoppers, not affiliated with Clay County Sheriff's Office or Clay County, which is a stakeholder and partner.
It is on our website.
It is on our website. They're a stakeholder and partner, just like you are.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am. We'll talk to you offline, too.
Now that the heat has died down a little bit with the Clark line thing, if you will, I'm okay. What are your thoughts, and how it's not prominent in the news right now about the Army people in the schools, SROs and such?
What she's asking is, the sheriff's going to address it, she's wanting to know about what our plan is on getting officers or armed individuals into our schools.
She said, since the heat's died down, you don't hear so much about it. So the whole school resource officer discussion, since that tragedy happened in February, and this new law has come to bear, in Clay County, we're responsible for having SRO, school resource officers, which is in other words, sworn deputy or sworn law enforcement officer in every public school in Clay County. That's one option that the law gives. Another option is called school safety officer. Anytime you hear school safety officer, that's, that's code for if the school board has its own police department, that would be a school board police department officer, another sworn police officer. In Clay County, we don't have a school board police department. So you have to scratch school safety officer from your definitions, with respect to Clay County. And then thirdly, the law provides for the guardian program. To qualify for the guardian program, an individual will have to already be an employee of the school district, one, have concealed weapons permit, two, and volunteer to be a guardian. That being said, then the school district provides the sheriff's office with a list of those names that had done so at this point. So they provide us with a list of those names, we train, and cert, and I certify those individuals as certified guardians. And then you have each of those individuals assigned to a specific school. I'll say this, that is not the ideal scenario for Clay County, in my opinion, but this would be in the high schools and junior high schools, and then they would like for, for guardians to be in the elementary schools. The law says that the school board owns the school resource officer program. So you hear SROs, the school board owns that. If you hear guardian, I own that as the sheriff. I don't have to participate in the guardian program. I can say, we're not going to do a guardian program in Clay County. Now, then that puts it back on the school board to now fund up school resource officers for all the schools, where they don't get the money from in short fashion. They're not. So the prudent thing to do, and I told superintendent this, I said, we can do the guardian program on a temporary basis until such time you come up with funding to fund up having SROs in all the schools, because that's what I want. And I think I speak for the constituents of Clay County, and if I'm not going in the right direction, you, you just, you point to me right now and say, no, that's not what we want. But I think our kids deserve having a sworn law enforcement officer in the school, someone who does that forelift, the token gun, who is in the business of providing law enforcement. I think they should be in schools. To have someone, to have someone else doing that is not the best option. Now, some folks have said, well, why don't you use, why don't you use retired military or former military or closer accustomed to carrying weapons? Well, the law will provide for that. I like it. But the law doesn't provide for it. The law says sworn deputy, sworn officer, that's school resource officer, school safety officer, which doesn't apply Clay County, or guardian. They have to be a employee of the school district. So now, if I was somebody, there is a person who's employed by school district who is in the military, has one of our commissions, you know, he could say, yeah, I want to volunteer for that and I'll be a gun starter. He'd be the perfect candidate for it. And somebody else who's in the military or the reserves who's a member of the school district, yeah, that would apply well for them. But it then says, it can't be somebody whose primary job, primary job is to facilitate instruction, I.e. a teacher, can't be a teacher, whose primary job is to be teaching. Well, then, that's a job, to teach, not carry guns. So where we are today is school resource officers, in fact, I'll be signing off on a contract tomorrow, sign off on a contract that says, school resource officers will be in the high schools and junior high schools. And then when the school district provides me with the, and by July first will do this, provides me with the names of the individuals who are members or employees of the school district who are volunteering to be guardians, then we'll start doing our backgrounds on them and then train them once they pass on that background.
Aside from that, though, what other steps might be taken, like, you know, metal detectors? I know it's all about money, I get it. Or maybe locking all of the doors from the inside except for one main door. I know these high schools are big, I get it, but, you know, a simple method has to ask.
I respect that. If y'all didn't hear, she talked about target hardening of the schools, and what are we doing about target hardening? And she said, yes.
And it doesn't cost them.
She said, yes, she knows it, it comes out, and certain things come at a cost. One of the challenges is, each of these schools is different, and nobody had the forethought, who would have thought, when these schools were built, nobody thought there would be an opportunity or a time when kids would be coming to school, starting to shoot kids? So they didn't have that, that mindset when they built the schools. Now, there's a school, an elementary school being built now, a new one, and that mindset is in place. So there's now about to be some standardization in the target hardening of each school. Subsequently, we have to retrofit, not we as a sheriff's office, but it's the district's responsibility, and there is money available for target hardening of schools. But what she's talking about is just some basic practices, internal practices, to make it less conducive for criminal activity coming onto the campus, like locking certain doors, doing certain things, and, and what we call situational awareness, that can make a school less likely to be victimized. Those are the responsibilities of the superintendent of schools and the school board. However, the sheriff's office is working closely, and it's our responsibility to do that, working closely with, with the district to not only find ways to harden schools, give you an example, I'm the chair of the Regional Domestic Security Task Force, doesn't mean anything to you, it's just, the buzzword, domestic, security, and assets. That is a target in our, schools are targets, soft targets, and you want to harden those targets, if that makes sense. If our kids are in there, it should be hardened so that those kids are kept safe. So there's a means of requesting certain assets or money through the Regional Domestic Security Task Force that I can check off and say, yeah, I want that in Clay County. But I can't, as the chair say, I can't initiate that, somebody else can. Somebody else on another committee, who's the chair of that committee, who's sitting two, two seats next to me, is now in a posture, he's a new chair of a certain committee. So now, he's in a posture position where he can now request certain assets in Clay County or certain dollars in Clay County, and then I'm sitting on a small panel that I can check off and say, yeah, approved. And it's Clay County's century. Then, unfortunately, things take about two years before it comes to fruition. So in the meantime, you know, we're talking to the superintendent about grant opportunities and slow processes. But the basic no-nonsense approach to internal securities are things that are sometimes outside of the scope of the district and they need some external input from stakeholders like the sheriff's office. And so we have a coordinator that we're asking for, a training coordinator that we're asking for in the next year's budget, that will help facilitate through that to the district.
One more, one more real quick part. Is there anything in the law that Scott wrote that, how, how many per children do there have to be SROs or guardians? Is there anything in there?
So her question was, is there a certain ratio of, in the law, that speaks to the number of children to the number of law enforcement officers? Now, the initial bill had, for every one thousand children, there should be one law enforcement officer. Well, the legislators cut that piece out there, so there's, that doesn't exist. So, you know, the current, the current plan is to have one per school, and there will be some relief factors involved in that. So there will be a little bit of fluff in terms of the number of SROs and the number of guardians, there will be some extras floating around, but.
When officers are doing paperwork, maybe they can sit on school campuses.
She said, when officers are, because I'm saying this because Steve can't hear you back, she said, when officers are doing paperwork, they can be sitting at the schools. I agree. And that message is already conveyed, conveyed to the director of operations who's standing in the back of the room, and that is common practice now.
Awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
When I was growing up in school, you know, I stand so.
You want to do it?
Sure, that makes it easier. When I was growing up in school, literally as a child, I'm old enough to know what it was like for fire drills. We had big schools, I went to school in Baltimore County, as well as in Pennsylvania. We had during the Vietnam War era, we had to practice how to stay safe in case we were under attack. Our children are being under attack. I think they can teach children and teachers in the classes, have drills. We had, my high school was four floors, we had to have fire drills to get out of the schools safely. The teachers had to know, they had to be accountable for where all of their students were, once the students were outside, how to get them. These are right, these are not just sheriff things, these are community things and school board things. But some of the things that we also learned in my school and that we were certified in was self-defense, as well as certified CPR and training. Because we don't know when these things are going to happen, and no matter what safeguards we take, things will still happen. Get your children certified. If they don't do it in the schools, you can teach them yourselves, and that's the wise and so forth. It's important that, as a community, you don't put the burden on all of your community leaders, because it's too much. They've got politics going on, they've got budgets they've got to deal with, they've got manpower that they've got to deal with, and everything day to day. Put your concerns in writing, use your legislators, use your local officials, that is their jobs. Come together and teach, put these things into practice. Teach how to be safe in schools, teach how to fight back. We know this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We know this. Thank you.
I don't know what happened. Something happened.
Hey, folks, just as a house keeps a measure, there's water and stuff at the back if you guys need something to drink.
Real, real quick, ma'am, real quick, and I'll give you the microphone. So with respect to what she was saying, I don't even know if y'all heard, she talked about doing drills and things like that, that, there is a mandate in, in the new law that speaks to doing active shooter drills in the schools. And those should be coinciding with the normal drills that happen on a recurring basis, basis in each school, hence the need for a training coordinator. So we have surmised that each school will do at a minimum, two active shooter drills. And I mean, this is not just something that's abstract or tabletop, this will be actually treating it like a real thing. Sound effects, I won't be shooting real guns, but sound effects and a movement so that the kids understand by muscle memory in their brains that this is how I should react. And we don't want our kids to be robots where they move into danger, you know, we got to teach our kids to be situationally aware, too. And kids depend largely upon the input of the adults in the room. And so we're also training the teachers as well. So we're talking forty-four schools overall that are impacted by this, by this law. And at a minimum, two per each, two per school, so that's eighty-eight active shooter drills in a year, so you can see how that can be a full-time job for somebody. Hence the need for training coordinator that we didn't have, facilitating those things. And so that, those relief components, the ones that, the different SROs, you know, train the guardians as well, who are the relief factors, when they're not relieving somebody, they will actually be participants in coordinating and facilitating these, these drills. This is more than just a one-person show. Yes, ma'am.
I just, I have a quick question about the guardianship program. So the guardian is actually going to be employed by the school they work for, by the district itself, and then be trained by you to, and then of course, concealed weapons permit is our responsibility. My question is, is how has the district, because I know it was put out there, but I'm putting it on social media, it's put on everywhere. Do you know any kind of response that they got for citizens to actually work for the district to become this guardian in the district?
Yes, ma'am, I do. So they, the way the school district put it out there, they were hiring school safety officers. That was that second option. School safety officers are sworn law enforcement officers who function as school board police officers. Well, we don't have a school board police department in Clay County. So by its very title, they put the thing out there all wrong. At any rate, there are people who, a little over thirty people have applied to fill the roles as guardians. It's kind of odd, because the people have to already be employees of the school district to even be considered for guardians. So that's one piece. And then in conversations with folks from the district, my question was, did you let these people know that they already have to possess a concealed weapons permit on the front end? Can't be hired and then later get one, they're all disqualified on the front end if they don't have one already. So the spirit of the way that law was written was so that a current school employee who has a concealed weapons permit, who wants to be in this program, would be in the program. But they, the district went a different route, or is going a different route, and they're hiring from the outside, and going to make these people employees, my thing is, they have to pass muscle with the background, psychological things like that, and then they have to have a concealed weapons permit before they even get moving on our end. That's why every time I get an opportunity, I ask the superintendent, hey, when are you going to provide us the names? Because we have a certain amount of time to facilitate a hundred forty-four hours of training. That takes, if we do it all at once, that's three and a half weeks of training. Then you have to consider, some of the folks aren't going to make training, some of the folks probably can't shoot, and probably. Some of the folks probably can't shoot, and probably could hit the broadside of a barn. So we don't have to be, we can't be in a posture where we're trying to remediate somebody's lack of shooting. These have to be people who are already shooters. Then, you're not going to hear this, we as a sheriff's office are training non-killers to be killers. Because the law says that their, the only purpose for guardians is to prevent or mitigate or address an active shooter situation. So they're not the lone arm of the principal or the administration, they can't stop kids from being targeted, their only role is to prevent kids from being mowed down and sprays the society that we live in. And so, coming in with a non-killer mentality and then trying to have that warrior mentality is going to be a little bit too much for certain people. And so they, they may not even pass muster, so you know, kind of told the district, you might be to try to hire a little bit extra because some folks are not even going to make it. We'll see how it goes, I haven't even been provided the names.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, I was informed yesterday that they had approximately 69 applicants. Now, I don't know the accuracy of that, but that came directly from a school board member, that they did have 69 applicants for those positions. And I have a friend that actually applied, because he's a fiance of the teacher I teach with, and he does have previous law enforcement, he experienced in the organization of the police. But then again, a lot of the other ones are exactly as you, as you described, not qualified. So hopefully out of the 69, they can get the number.
Corrections, that's still law enforcement, who know how to shoot, know how to shoot accurately and have a warrior mentality, if you will. And so, they won't be hard to train. So, you know, my thing is, to have the sufficient number, you know, I'm not the pessimist in the room, but I understand that, I understand human nature, and I know that some people will say, ah, the pay isn't enough, some people will say, ah, it's not what I thought it was, was going to be, and I quit. That's why they should hire a sufficient number and then have a pool of people who are qualified to step in those shoes. You always have to have a plan B, because the mandate is, there will be a presence in the schools at all times when those kids are there, all times. So whether it be SROs or guardian, there has to be that presence in the school during school operating hours. And then there's another thing to be taken into consideration is, what happens after hours? What happens when there's always some kind of practice going on? Band practice, football practice, baseball practice, soccer practice, chess club practice, whatever, always something going on in the schools, and even then, you have to have a presence in the schools. And so the superintendent and the district understand that, in those scenarios where the SRO doesn't apply and the guardian doesn't apply, somebody's going to be picking up overtime in that situation, whether it be the guardians or whether it be somebody in law enforcement, but somebody, the district is going to be shouldered with paying for those after hour functions. It just, it's just the nature of the beast. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, oh, just a couple other things, not maybe, possibly not everybody in the room is aware of. First of all, the issue arises not from necessarily the school system or the county commission or the sheriff's office. It was an underfunded mandate, that, that's the issue, alright? And the county commission actually recommended to the school board to have a one mil increase to help fund that, the lack of funding, okay? And if you're a school teacher, or you're involved in the school system, or you're involved in the sheriff's office, or any public service, we all know that we're all struggling to provide services with less and less, okay? And, and I think that's the biggest issue. The school board did vote, this last school board meeting.
Thursday.
For a one mil increase to go on to the ballot, okay? That will go on to the ballot, so the public will have to decide if they want to do that one mil increase. It's not all specifically for the school resource officers as it is worded, it is for that and also going to this general fund to supplement the school budget. I mean, that's basically how it's worked.
Yes.
Whether you agree with it or not. And that's what the county commission wanted to ask, whether or not they want to use that to help provide funding for that portion of the school resource.
That's, that's true. I can tell you about this, this, this one mil increase, and you say, what's one mil? And what is that, what is that in a real number? Anywhere between nine and 11 million, that's 10 million, I won't say 10 million, split the difference, $10 million. The number, or the proposal that the sheriff's office presented to the district was a recurring cost of $5.6 million, that's SROs in all of the schools. So you subtract $5.6 million from $10 million, and then you have $4.4 million left over. Those are, what Spenny talked about, other operating expenses that, you know, or reserve funds or whatever, I don't know what the district is going to do with that money, but that will be something that US taxpayers and voters have to decide on. In the end, at the end of the day, the money comes from the taxpayers, whether it be a military rate increase from the schools or the BCC, it's still the taxpayers' dollars. And that's been said on numerous occasions, and you know, no one wants to be loose with taxpayers' dollars, it's our money too. So, no one wants to be loose with your money. Your voice has to be heard at the polls where you say, this is how I want my money spent? Or nope, this is not how I want my money spent. And if you say no at the polls, then guess what? Back to the drum board again, and we'll continue with the SROs in the high schools, the junior high schools, and guardian program. Until such time that the school board, it's their responsibility by law, the school board comes up with the funding to staff up SROs in all the schools. Now, you say, well, where's the BCC fit in? Where do county commissioners fit in this? Well, the county commission is not tasked by law to fund up the school resource officer program. Again, it's the, it's the district's, it's the district's responsibility. That's why the BCC, and I almost, you got a term, kind of took a back, a step back from that. Now, there's some things that the county commissioners agreed to do, and that's to pay capital, some CIP dollars. They, they said, we'll pay for all the cars that it takes to produce these deputies to have, we'll pay for those expenses that are not covered in the salaries and the benefits and things like that, and operating expenses, but we will take care of the capital for those, for those deputies. So, I mean, that is a, that is a bonus that the, that the BCC didn't have to do, but they did do. And another thing that the BCC does is they give certain dollars to, actually to the district, they give a portion of dollars to the district, already have been for several years, you know, the, I don't know which side of things I want to lean on. You know, some say they can give more, sure, there's always, they can always give more. And some say they're giving too much. But there's other, there's other counties out there who don't give any, and we're just one of seven or eight counties that do provide money to the district. So, you know, the kid's safety is what we're worried about. And there's not one person in this room, whether you've got a kid in school, a grandkid in school, a niece or nephew, we have family members and friends who have kids in schools, and we want those kids to be safe. We actually want all our kids to be safe in the state of Florida, but you know what? Kind of selfish, I want to say in Clay County first. You know, like the president says, America first, Clay County first, and then we can worry about the rest, let, let New Ball worry about New Ball, St. John's worry about St. John's, so on and so forth. But right now, I think the folk in this room, the folks in this room are more concerned about the kids in Clay County, right there in the back.
Sheriff, real quickly, I mean, I know that, you know, as we think about some of these shootings that did take place across, you know, different school districts, one here in Florida, one in Texas, in both instances, there was a situation where those students had a terrorist threat, and due to their background, and you know, not calling this out too heavily, but there's a federal funding that's related to not reporting minority incidents in schools in order to keep the school federal funding at a higher level, just to be totally honest, right? The, the percentage of problems that happen in a school equate to funding dispersment's getting lower. And we have that same problem here in our county as well, the state of Florida also lowers school funding based on school performance. And the amount of children that we push out of school that probably shouldn't be there because they cause incidents in their schools. How do we overcome that problem in the schools? Because honestly, that's, that's where these, you know, every one of these you look at, there were signs everywhere, and in the Florida case, there were close to 38 instances where deputies showed up with his kid and he said he was going to do this stuff, and he didn't do anything about it.
The ball got dropped, I think we all agree on that.
No, no, I was saying.
The ball did get dropped, and so, you know, in conversations with the district, you know, they own that.
Yeah.
They own that whole thing of, all these red flags being manifested. If I walked in this room and started throwing up red flags, you'd say, why is the sheriff throwing flags? Somebody would ask the question, what are you doing? And say, what's his problem? And try to take some action to rectify him from throwing flags. Almost finished, guy over here, but we, we didn't drop the ball, but somebody did drop the ball, and you know, it's incumbent upon us in Clay County, the leaders in Clay County, to ensure that we, in our processes, don't drop the ball. And I don't want to sound like a freaking politician, because I don't identify one, sorry. Y'all know what I mean. But, you know, the district is comprised of elected officials, school board and superintendent, and they don't have all the answers. And you know what? Probably should have had one of them sitting up here, sit there all these good looking guys, but um, they're not up here. Sounds like a couple, some sudden amount of experts are actually out there in the audience, and I respect y'all's input. And you know what? Hey, we're a community, and each of us has an idea on how we can fix certain problems. And everybody in this room has a voice, and you can get this mic, and if you've got a solution to it, man, I'm willing to hear it. And guess who's going to get a copy of this thing? The school board, the superintendent, so.
Thank you.
Dale?
Yes, tell me something on the, the money situation. Why does every, every school resource officer have to have a cop? Why does, why does all that have to happen with? I understand you're saying that there's going to be a death row, but they don't have to, they're going to work from 3:30 most of the time unless it's overtime, I understand. But why would you have to have cop cars? Why couldn't you go and start at the bottom like most school people do? You ain't got the money, you start just to get somebody in there, then you work your way up. Second question is, this is really about the school.
I'm going to start right now.
Why are you, you got $12,000 impact fee, brand new helmet, where is all that money going?
Maybe I'll start on the first, $12,000 impact fee?
Yes.
And I know the sheriff's office is just.
How many, 7,000? They just approved 7,000, brand new hogs for designs?
You spoke about something that's outside of my wheelhouse.
But I'm just saying, okay, cop cars, but just that.
We'll go to the cop cars. Valid question, it's a valid question. Both of them are valid questions, I just don't have the answers to that second one. We all, some of us have some opinions, but I'll start with the first one. The question was cop cars, why do, why should the SROs specifically have cop cars? And that question came up at a BCC meeting, a fair question. So, one of the, one of the BCC members, one of the commissioners asked the question, and he said, those cars, my concern is, those cars are just going to be sitting there. Okay, what, that's fair. What happens with the cars that the investigators have currently? What happens with my car when I'm in the office? It sits there. What happens to your car? It sits there when you're not, when you're not, there's a time to drive and there's time not to drive. We could not equip them with cars, and then if they need one, they're out of gas, no pun intended. So, that is a tool in the toolbox of law enforcement. And the example that I used at the BCC meeting was, and the school resource officer, his car's parked out there, a couple, I'm going to speak to two things. One, there's something called presence, presence, that's not the thing, that's under the Christmas tree. That is actually the state of being somewhere, your presence, you belong, you're there. So this, this marked law enforcement vehicle, the fact that it's sitting in a certain location on school property tells the bad guy, you know what, might be somebody in there with a gun, if I go in there and cut up, might lose my life. If I don't have that vehicle there, they say, free and clear, kill zone, let me go and X school because there's no cop there. That's one example of presence. Second example of presence is, if somebody says, you know what, I'm about to rob about 20 people in Middleburg, I think I'll start at the Middleburg Civic Association building. Ooh, wrong location, look at all the cop cars. It's presence, it means somewhere around here, even if they didn't see any cops. They say, some cops are close proximity, because I see a bunch of cop cars there. If there's a bunch of cops there, there might be a bunch of guns. If there's a bunch of guns and I go cut up, I might lose my life. And I say it tongue in cheek, but that's the truth, that's how bad guys think. If they do have their vehicle, let's say something happens, a violent crime, somebody is murdered right across the street, and then that person jumps in the vehicle and takes off, and it's, and the deputy is looking right at it. He could chase the car, but that ain't going to last long, especially these, these deputies these days. Or, he is. Sorry about that, y'all probably saying, yeah, you're a real leader. No, you don't like slums, Sheriff. I'm working on it. Or they can hop in their vehicle, turn on those blue lights and sirens, and give chase to that suspect. It's just a tool. And so the concern that the commissioner had was the cops. And I said, well, why don't we pick some other piece of equipment and take that from them? Let's take the gun. He's like, no, 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 no. I said, let's take the bullet, the bullet, let's take the bullets. You say, oh, he's being funny. One misplaced, one misplaced bullet will cost more than a fleet of vehicles when somebody sues the sheriff's office. And so for every vehicle that we have, you shoot the wrong person, it costs more than all those cars with you. So we can't pick and choose pieces of equipment not to give them. I would err on the side of giving them the equipment that they could potentially need versus not giving them anything. I could give them bulletproof vests and not make them wear them, or I can give them the vest and make them wear them. They may not ever need those vests in their career, but by God, if they need it and have it, they'll be thanking somebody that they did have that as a piece of equipment. The county's not poor, and we don't have to pour them out. I don't want, I don't want to say we're going to loosely spend money and I go back to that. But when you think about the Clay County Sheriff's Office, you just don't think about the deputies running around chasing cars or doing anything on foot or riding by. Now, we have some who ride bicycles, we have some who ride motorcycles, and that's what they do. We have some who drive boats, but by and large, to get from point A to point B, they drive cars, and first and foremost, they are law enforcement officers who may be recalled in an emergency to perform other law enforcement duties that require a vehicle. Another example that I use, and I'm using simple logic, if it's hitting the fan, and I think we all can put that in our minds, what that looks like, if it's hitting a fan somewhere in the county, I will utilize every resource at my disposal to put that out. So if something big or major happens in the county and I need bodies, gun-toting bodies, or a bunch of vehicles to do whatever I have to do to, to keep you safe, I'll pull from everywhere, school can go and lock down. But the officer can't not have the mobility that they need to be effective if they don't have a vehicle. It's best practice in this profession. Rock, paper, scissors. I've got two of them back there.
Sheriff, on first call, I want to thank you guys for the job you all do. Second call, I have a great question for you, sir. A few months ago, I challenged you to clean up Clay Hill and the other parts of the area. We took the time and rode together, we looked at a few locations, and most of the shit we stole, did kind of root for there in Clay Hill and things like that. Would you give an update on how that's come?
I shouldn't, I know somebody would probably give you. I, you know, they woke me up at 4:00 in the morning and said, hey Sheriff, we're going to do this big operation on Clay Hill, and I got up out of bed a little early. It was a little early for me, but you know what? I can't whine about it because I asked for this. But I won't let Chief McKenna speak to it because he's the one who has all the intel on that, and all the rest have to make, and they have to push the paperwork over here right now. But I'll let him speak to it because it's his job. That's why I got him up here, because there's over 600 employees at the sheriff's office, and each of them has a responsibility to do. If they weren't there, I'd be doing it all. So for every box in the org chart, and this is what I tell my folks, and this is what I'll tell you, for every box in the organizational chart that is populated with a body or bodies, if, if we erase that person from the org chart, then it's a responsibility of the sheriff to do it himself or herself. So that's why I spread the wealth around, it's the wealth of knowledge, it's the synergy of the group that makes the Clay County Sheriff's Office stronger, and it's the synergy of the community and the sheriff's office that makes Clay County stronger. Y'all heard me say, we're Clay County strong during Irma when I was on the news, and I said, you know what the difference between us and some of them other counties are? We're Clay County strong. And I wasn't saying it just to be tongue in cheek, but I saw a lot of folks doing some, some heroic things out there. I'm talking about your average citizen out there with sea dews and johnboats and doing things like that, that to help their fellow neighbor in a time of crisis. That's what, that's what makes Clay County different, that's what makes me glad to be a part of the sheriff's office. So, you ready? So, you ready? You have enough time to think about it?
The sheriff made that very clear to me what the issues were out there. Uh, we were aware of some of them already. I can second from some of my undercover's out there to that area watch. Uh, we were watching hand-to-hand deals going after the gas station parking lot, uh, at the Dollar General. Uh, wherever they be, they were just out in the open like they, they not cater. Uh, that was very disturbing to us when we were able to sit out there for a little while and watch that, because that's not acceptable. I wonder my child would have to look out for him while pumping gas and see that exchange of dope in the parking lot. That's unacceptable. And the sheriff made that very clear to me, that he felt that was unacceptable. We wanted to get something about it. I got all my narcotics sheated made. We're already in the works of working some deployments out there. My undercover's have been involved with making some deals with some of the individuals. A few months back, I think you saw where we did the, uh, we called it Operation Sheriff Blame. We ended up making twenty, one arrest, only out of arrests, twenty-eight individuals. There was, I think it was more warrants than that, there was twenty-eight individuals that got arrested for dealing in narcotics on that. Uh, after that was done, the sheriff said, "Keep pedaling down." And I think I, I get a text from him about once a week, said, "Keep pedaling down," pulled that up. Uh, we conducted, uh, ultimately about four, four hours, well, not last eighteen, eighteen days, the last couple of months. We did about four hours a night. We did four hundred seventy-two traffic stops, made ninety-eight, uh, ninety-eight arrests, drug arrests. Uh, one of the things I found interesting, it was the total vehicle search that we conducted was a hundred twenty-six, and we made ninety-eight drug arrests. That's a pretty high percentage of the vehicles we actually searched that actually had dope in the car. I mean, almost, you're eighty percent of all of them, I believe, in my mind. So, that's a problem, and we're continuing to address it. We haven't let up, that detail's still going on, we're still gonna be out there. I've seen people upset that we're stopping vehicles and we're doing things, and it's, it's holding them up, it's like no place. And I apologize for that, but I'm not gonna apologize for trying to stop the drug team out there. We're keeping where they proceed and out in the open, I guess.
I know it's an inconvenience. It's an inconvenience to some people when, you know how people do, they run a navy. You sit outside a road with the lights going on, your car's slowing down, I don't know if they're looking to see if there's their kinfolk or something, right? They just got pulled over or something like that. It's inconveniencing. It's inconven- inconveniencing to you, if you get pulled over, you know, good and well, you don't have no drugs in the car. But let me educate you on something, and I know some of y'all already know this, something called pretextual stop. Pretextual stop, which is legal in the state of Florida. That means that you get pulled over for some, for some traffic infraction. Ran a red light, stopped sign, you were speeding, obscured tag, tent too dark, something, right? Well, actually, the cop is really just trying to get inside the vehicle and, and check that vehicle, see if you got any drugs in it. So they pull you over legally and they ask the question. First of all, if they start conducting a traffic stop, they just ask the question. "You have anything illegal in your car?" "No." "You mind if I check it?" You can say yes or no. It's either yes or no. You can say no. And they can't check it, you have constitutional rights to say no, illegal search and seizure, right? So then, another tool in the toolbox is to bring out a canine, a canine dog, and have that dog go around the vehicle, and see if they, that dog alerts on your vehicle. However, that interaction can't take longer than the, a reasonable amount of time that it would normally take to conduct the traffic stop and do the business of a traffic stop. Does that make sense? So if somebody pulls you over, if you ran a red light, they pull you over, they check your stuff, they write the ticket, that takes a certain amount of time. Don't take thirty minutes, it doesn't take forty-five minutes or an hour. So it can't, some guys are like, "Why are you giving away all the secrets?" Well, I'm not giving away all the secrets, it's you, you have the right, you can say no. And, and let them send their dog, let me send the dog. You know what? The dog doesn't alert on your car, you owe them about your business. And, and at the end of the day, it's not gonna take it more, should not take longer than the normal traffic interaction between traffic cop and citizen. So, we're, we're leveraging that because, leveraging the traffic because of those pretextuals, because the drugs aren't coming into Clay County and out of Clay County on Pat Mule or somebody's back. I mean, somebody might have a backpack full of drugs and they're walking down the street, and we may not bother, we may not, we may miss them. But by and large, the drugs are coming in, in a vehicle, into a neighborhood. And if we stop these, it's just like throwing a dice. If you stop ten vehicles going into a certain neighborhood that may have drug issues, one of them cars might have drugs in it. And if we stop ten people, and nine of y'all are good people, and you don't get nothing but a warrant, and you got a little bit inconvenience, but you don't know about the tenth person, but we got four kilos of straight fentanyl off of, then you know what? You'll never see the fruits of our labor, but we're out there trying. And people say, "You know, you guys are doing a good job." Some people say, "Y'all, you know, you're inconveniencing us." But you know what we're doing? We're trying. We're trying to keep you safe. We're trying. And that's what these men and women who wear these uniforms are doing. They're trying. We didn't, you know, I tell folks, we didn't come from some other planet of cops, and then we landed on Earth. We're just members of society that come out of the same neighborhoods as y'all, who chose a profession to try to keep us all safe, so that you don't have to. Now, we all know, I don't even, by show hands, only wanna get into the Second Amendment, how many of y'all got guns? Because everybody probably has one, or a bunch of them. And you know, cops aren't never there when you need them. So for those who don't have them, former military folks in here, you remember, they used to say, "Smoke 'em white, smoke 'em if you got it." Hey, you buy you a gun to protect you and your family, that's coming from the sheriff. Now, that means to me, some folks in here who have a liberal, liberal nature, but you know what? They depend upon the rest of us to keep them safe, so be it. But I'll tell you what, the men and women who wear the uniforms are trying. And you have to do your portion too, to try to keep yourself safe as well. But again, these drugs are moving into our county and around our county, and the only way you gonna get them without the intel that comes from a CI or a citizen who says, "Something's just not right." There's too many vehicles going in and out of that house odd times a day, and they're only there for two, three minutes and gone. That's suspicious activity. Could be somebody having a little house party, but they sure don't do it every single day or the middle of the night. That's suspicious activity, and, and you're welcome to call and point us to that and say, "Hey, I wanna remain anonymous." But that house right there, at this such, such address, y'all need to look into that. And guess what? My guys will do that. Did I answer your question? Where'd you go?
Yeah, you got it, sir.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
How many of those are still in jail?
I'll just ask the judge that. I won't, I won't, I won't, I won't.
The reason I'm asking, if y'all put them in jail, and they're coming back out the door, is it state attorney's deal, or is it the judge's? Is it, who's, who's playing the leniency on it?
Fair question, no, wouldn't you say? So, there's this thing called due process. So we arrest, the sheriff's office arrests on proper cause. We take that person to jail, they process through, they appear in front of a judge in first appearance. That judge may impose a bond, where they bond out. If they don't bond out, they stay in jail until they get, get their due, their time in court. If they do bond out, they're out, run back in society again. But then when they have their day in court, there's a lot of legality, the legal issues that have to get reconciled between the state attorney, which is the prosecution, and the defense attorneys, and, you know, sometimes it's time served, sometimes it just, there are certain parameters on what they can do and can't do. And the person has their right to due process. I tell you what, as a law enforcement professional, you know, sometimes it sickens me, and it has nothing, no question on the judiciary or the state attorneys. It just sickens me sometimes that, you know, we can arrest a person, I'll just use an arbitrary number. We can arrest a person at midnight, and then at eight in the morning, we see that same person out there on the streets again, because they have had their due process, they processed through, they bonded themselves out, and they're back out on the block doing something else.
That's the reason I was asking.
Yeah, I see. It's unfortunate.
You know, maybe it's something the state attorney needs to start looking at.
Legislature, Florida legislature, I didn't have to do it as an attorney.
Well, I mean-
It also has to do with these voters, who you walk in and who don't.
Dale, let me tell you this. If you get out of jail and you act up again, we just gonna get you again. And again, and again.
That's just like, y'all doing your job.
So, yeah, we'll come back.
That's one hundred percent. Because if you ain't doing nothing wrong, you ain't got no problem.
Yeah. So, on that same token, let me address something about the, the stuff in Middleburg real quick, on the dogs. Now, I hear a lot of complaints about the dogs doing fake hits. Now, I think the stats that Chief McKenna gave you indicate that that's just not true. So, the dogs are trained to hit on dope samples. If you don't have dope in your car, but the guy who rode to you, to Win Dixie was smoking dope, the dogs gonna hit on your car. Just understand that, okay? Take some responsibility. If you got a pothead friend, don't let him run your car. Let him sit in the back, okay? So understand that it's an inconvenience, but if you let your kid borrow the car, and he had a pothead friend in the car, the dog's gonna hit on your car. But if you got no dope in there, you're not gonna go to jail. So that's just how it works.
I can tell you, I'm gonna give you, since we're talking about that, a foolproof way not to even have to worry about no canines and, I bet, I bet the majority of y'all have never had your car sniffed by a dog. You know why? Because you didn't do anything wrong. You, you weren't speeding, you didn't run a red light, you run a stop sign, you're nothing obscuring your tag, no dark tent, no tire that's falling off your car, no crap windshield, not driving too slow, not weaving, not careless driving, not reckless driving. Don't have somebody hanging out the page of your window, not have somebody, not seatbelt, it goes on and on and on. There's a whole lot to chapter three sixteen in the Florida state statute. That's all the moving infractions. And we in law enforcement have a litany of those up here in our toolbox that we use. There's such thing called driving too slow, too. You say, "Why'd you pull me over? Driving too slow." What? You may not get a ticket, but they're gonna ask you the question. "Hey, you got anything illegal in there?" Foolproof way. If the thing says thirty-five, go thirty-five. If the thing turns red, stop. If, if there's an octagonal shaped thing that says stop on it, stop. Don't roll through, let the car rock backwards, and then you, you've stopped. And I, and I mean, I'm just being very practical. If you're not doing anything wrong, you wouldn't even be in here if you was doing something wrong. Too many cops around here. But if you're not doing anything wrong, there's, there's no fear. You could, if the cop's driving twenty and the speed lip's thirty, the speed limit is thirty-five, and it's a passing zone, pass him. Going, he's going too slow. Right? Y'all say, "Man, I ain't passing that joke." But I'm, you can though, legally you can. Say you're on expressway, cop's going forty, speed limit sixty-five, fifty-five. Drive by him. Just do it. He's going, he's driving too slow. But most cops are speeding anyways, so.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scott?
I'd like to take a look at Middleburg here. Uh, a question I have is, uh, at one time, there was a partnership between the sheriff's department and the school board and superintendent of schools, whereby a, a deputy lived at the schools at no, at little or no cost to that person, a single-eyed or double-eyed. And I think that was, yeah, it belonged to what Dale was talking about, I think. You never didn't know if that law enforcement officer was there or not there. I think if we could re-institute or revisit that issue, that it would be a recruitment. Could be used as recruitment tool for new deputies, especially the younger deputy like that.
Yes, sir.
So, I just want a question I have.
That's a very good question. I asked the same question to the superintendent. I said, "Hey, man, you remember when they used..." Well, it was the same thing he asked. And I said, "What happened to that?" And, you know, superintendent, he speaks real fast. He's like, "You know what, I don't know what happened to that." Talking real fast. But he says, "You know, let me look into that." I'm like, "Why don't we just make that available to the deputies?" Or some, some sworn law enforcement, where we got one living on property on a school campus. That's forty-four schools. Forty-four schools, forty-four trailers, I don't think they're gonna wanna live in a, the other thing, the little mobile thing. But the trailer, what do they call them things? The portable?
Portables.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna wanna live in a portable. But they'll live in a trailer. And it, it has proven itself to be effective in times past, and I don't know what happened to that. Does that all aim on me? I don't know what happened to that, so as a note to myself, find out what happened to, why don't we have the trailers? Y'all think it's a joke, but I'll forget. Find out what happened to the deputies having the ability to live on school campuses is in a trailer. School campuses in a trailer.
Those all high schools had. Every high school in the house, they all had it.
I remember that.
The work high school jail looks-
I remember. I think it's a good thing.
Clay Hill Elementary have all of, all of the rules.
How about, okay, I've tasked myself with following up on it. So, let's see.
That went away with the last school superintendent.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll find the answer, and I won't call a town hall meeting to give you that answer. But I'll tell you what I will do, is maybe I'll go Facebook Live or something like that, or at least report it and, and put it out there so we can find the answer. Now I'm really on a hot seat. Make sure, don't ever forget. Let it be within the next twenty-four hours, too. Yep.
Why do deputies have to get permission from supervisors to write traffic tickets or other citations? Well, I've had a number of them say, "I gotta get permission from my supervisor."
I don't know, I'm telling you that.
They didn't hear the question.
No, deputies were-
So the question was, why do deputies have to get permission from a superior to write a traffic citation?
Or other-
Or other. They, they don't have to do that. They don't have to do that. I don't wanna sound rude, so you say. But the folks around the room, I'll tell you what. You're looking at me? Do you have to get permission to write a traffic citation? I'm looking beyond you. Do you have to get permission? You can shake your head or no? I'm just gonna do a poll. Hot seat on my, do you have to get permission? You don't even write it, do you? Jury, do you? Do you?
No, I, I agree with what I've experienced, a number of deputies.
Clay County does?
I mean, have you been pulled over?
I'm all sorry, we're losing control. Losing control.
No, I do, I tell the supervisor.
Yeah, that's, that's not efficient, though. That's not an effective and efficient use of, of resources to ask for permission. That's like, that's like being in a situation where you have to, uh, employ deadly force or non-deadly force, and then say, "Hold on, let me call my supervisor." Is it all right to engage this person or not? That's not efficient in law enforcement, because the supervisor's not the one who pulled them over.
No, I agree. These are things that I experienced, I've witnessed, I've never been pulled over, but I've had incidents happen where your deputies should have cited someone, hit and run, other events. And they're like, "Well, I gotta call my supervisor and get permission." I know that.
I think the deputy do better, too, probably blew smoke up you.
They didn't mind doing the job.
I'm not trying to be ugly, but-
Whatever reason, and it was very antagonistic, and it was uncomfortable, is them not doing their jobs and it created animosity.
May I say something, please? I've been here four generations, I can go back into the eighteen hundreds that my family was here. I've been pulled over twice my whole life in Clay County. And never one time have I had an officer ever say anything like that to me. Have I ever witnessed one ever say anything like that to somebody else?
So, because you don't witness it, doesn't it matter?
No, I think you're getting officer-
Well, I'll tell you what.
The, the way that it's gonna be split up between elementary and, and police tools?
Yes.
And we also talked about presence, did we just by accident create softer targets now? Are there gonna still be presence of these elementary tools? That's my concern, does it bother or not, anything else?
So, yes, the, uh, no, no, we didn't, I got, I got a yes and a no. No, we didn't create soft, softer targets, but, and yes, we are doing something else. The, the patrol folks, well, the chief alcance, have also been instructed to make sure that if they have a school on their beat, that they swing by those schools and be visible during the course of their shift. Not a one-time thing, anytime they get an opportunity, just to enhance that presence of law enforcement being there. Because it's about point. You have the elementary schools that, that for a short period of time are going to have the guardian program. Those folks are not gonna drive a mark patrol vehicle. So, there is no presence there. And the bad guy doesn't know what the heck the guardian program is, and that, and know that there's a gun toter somewhere in there invented in that school. So we wanna help them understand that, well, one's patrolling the parking lot, and that guy or lady inside is just nothing but a sleeper. And not because they're asleep, but a sleeper, because he won't never see it coming. And that's a temporary thing. You know, I don't like the whole guardian program thing, but until such time that the school board funds up having, you know, the dollars to have SRO in all the schools, and that's a, that's a part-time solution.
Mr. Dillon, you got a follow-up question?
Yes, I did. A sheriff, does he have date on the training facility the sheriff's department has out on two, Highway two fifteen? Is that a matter?
Yes, sir. So there's a piece of property out there on two fifteen that the, the long-term goal is to have a firing range, a driving track, a training facility. You know, we, we took a shot at, first of all, getting a, a building out there. Looked like we asked for too much money because the governor shot it down. We asked for a million dollars. It's gonna be a nice building, a nice training building, a real nice one. And so he shot that part down. The, the federal government through the FBI said, "Hey, we'll partner with you, and we'll pony up some money and get you a firing range out there." So that, yeah, we're still waiting on that, too. Then we got a, a state organization who said, "Hey, we, we do ranges all the time. As long as we can use a certain portion of that range, we'll fund it up for you." Like, look, that's a win-win. First, I don't want, I don't want that range or track to come on the backs of the Clay County taxpayers. So as an update, the St. John's River State College says that they want to get out of the business of doing shoot range and track and all that stuff in St. John's County and want to come towards Clay County soon, like real soon. I'm like, "Hey, we got a piece of property out there right off two fifteen. Like, you can use that." So there were, in discussion with St. John's River State College, and they will pay for everything and do a training complex out there on that property. We'll kind of, it'll be spread around a little bit, but at least a firing range component and driving track component of that will be out there on that property. Do a follow-up on, this is my, me making notes to myself. Do a follow-up with St. John's River State College on the status of the gun range and driving track in Clay County.
Sheriff, I can add a couple of quick things that I still have on my. So, um, the, with that range, it's, one of the visions for it is to be open to the public at points, so it'll be public safety, kind of fire, police, all the above, and partnership with multiple organizations. But it's also on our legislative priority list, so the county actually has a, advocate in Tallahassee that works through priorities, and we've been pretty successful getting billions of dollars back in Clay County for a variety of programs. And so that is very high on our priority list for future projects in the state. So we're hopeful, we have some powerful legislators in Tallahassee right now. We're hopeful that in the next few years, we can work on trying to get some of that back there.
Where is it located?
Off two fifteen.
No, where's the property located off two fifteen?
It's up on Church West, what's its name? Old Road Baptist Church.
That's a big piece of property.
I know, I live across the street.
It's right next to Camp Land, so it works out well, too, because of all that's happening at Camp Land.
So what does that mean in the future? Then, then that, two fifteen's gonna have to be forelanded, and then all of us have to say so because of your powerful legislators?
It, it, not necessarily. I think it'll be, it'll have public safety going out there from time to time at, at some of the camp land.
But what about us that live there? We're gonna be listening? I mean, I am all gun.
Yeah, it's two hundred acres, so it'll, I'm assuming you hear a lot of what Camp Land is doing currently, so. It's, it'll be no more used than loud, loud, because it's two hundred acres, too. So you'll have, it'll be embedded into the property in certain ways to, to keep it. But there will be public access on, on weekends and stuff. They're still bringing that up, but if FWC or somebody like that partners with us, that's a requirement that they have, but that's one thing we want. So if you have a permit holder, that's, I think, can go out there and use that also, so.
There'll be more cops out there, so you might get pulled over more twice.
Not me.
But, yeah, we'll speed getting there.
I did hear some, yes, ma'am?
That's quite so, Dale. Um, there's been an ongoing situation, I live off on Clayville, too. And the property next to me was with some people bought it. Ever since they bought it, you guys have been called eight times. I've had my windshield broken on my truck. They pull up on it and keep being next to my husband's car, my car. Spent the tires on the rocks at it. None of damn things been done. I went up to the substation one weekend, they said there'd be extra patrol. Nothing happened. This weekend, they just came by, was the only weekend that I could go out into my yard. Uplifted fifteen years in the same spot. Nothing happens to them. The officer asked them to move his truck out so I could bring my hay down the side of my driveway. Because I live in a flooded area. He said directly to the officer three times, "No, I'm not moving it." Then the cop said to me, "It's a civil matter." Now, my windshield's been broken, I don't know his name. This guy doesn't even live there. He just comes, gets drunk every weekend and starts shit with me and my husband on my property.
Yes, ma'am.
And nothing has happened. I can't get my windshield fixed because I don't have the insurance and I don't have social security. Every, starting every Friday till Sunday, it happens.
Something's about to happen. Can y'all get, get? I don't want you to say your address out loud. I'll, I'll send somebody to you and get that address.
I'm working all this weekend. I'll see what you have. I'm good.
We've been going off for three months now.
Let's make sure, let's make sure we get the address.
I'm like, "Other road, and the ATVs are really becoming a problem."
So.
And, and the boat parts. If I can add to that, it doesn't seem to be, when I talk to one deputy, it's like, "Well, this is a rural area." And then you've got other deputies that are saying, "Well, you know, they're not allowed to be on the road or the shoulder." There doesn't seem to be any consistency between, so I think if everybody can get on the same page and we know for sure, because these guys, and, and I mean, and it's not kids. I mean, these are people that are, you know, in their late twenties, you know, racing up and down. I had a guy last night doing donuts in the middle of Thunder Rock, you know? I mean, and, and it's just, it, it, somebody's gonna get hurt because their helmet's on, that sort of thing. And, and it's also escalating to some criminal mischief as well, you know? Going on people's property or trying to and things like that with these ATVs. It needs to stop. It's just, it's, it's becoming bad.
Yes, ma'am. Somebody report that? They already wrote it. So if we are on the same page, it's in the state statute. So the state statute kind of, it governs what those ATV riders are supposed to be doing and not supposed to be doing, and we'll make sure that we follow up on that piece. The types of questions that are coming up now, the types of things that are coming from the floor are the types of things that get discussed at the Sheriff's Neighborhood Engagement Team meeting, Sheriff's Net. And for those who don't know what the Sheriff's Net is, it's a group of folks who live in Middleburg, who live here. There's, there's other neighborhood engagement teams all around the county, and they meet on a monthly basis, and they discuss the things that are going on in their communities. Because inasmuch as you may love the county as I do, you probably can give a hell of beans about what's going on in Keystone. You care about what's happening in Middleburg. And the same thing, I need to do, but you know, you wanna, you want your little piece of the pie safe, and then you worry about the others. You know, that's just human nature. So the Middleburg folks meet on a recurring basis, and they need a good spot. They need to see the river, right there at a mail's place. And you get, oh, look, they got applications at the bathroom. Somebody at, where we're all bringing it. But there's no real hard obligation for you. You actually come in, you get to engage law enforcement, share your complaint, sometimes get a little more information than you want, and then, once you share that information, sheriff's office is obligated to follow up on that and report that back at the next meeting to let you know what has happened or what has not happened. And that's going on all across the county right behind me.
Right now, the meeting is the third Thursday of the month. So we'll be meeting the third Thursday of the month at six o'clock.
So third Thursday, third Thursday of the month at six o'clock?
Cedar River Seafood, Blandon.
Yes, sir.
Why are you making the net team by application only?
Well, because, the question was, why do you make, why are we making the Sheriff's Net by application only? Because I don't, I don't want a bunch of felons sitting up in there and I don't know who they are. I don't want a bunch of bad guys sitting with, intr- intramingle with the good folks and we don't know who they are. I don't want a sexual predator being in the midst of normal, normal folks and not be able to say, "No, you ain't coming here, you ain't welcome in this group."
I get that, but my background, and I say this because my background says I'm an investigator. A lot of people do a lot of things and they don't get caught. So when you exclude the public, I grew up with Neighborhood Watch, and everybody was welcome for Neighborhood Watch, because somebody might have a felony or because somebody might had a misdemeanor on their record. You should not exclude them from being able to help their community, and that is wait, raise them up in this world instead of excluding them.
I hear what you're saying, but I'm gonna go out and live here. I don't want, I don't want a convicted felon. I don't want a sexual predator all that intramingle with the good folks in Clay County. Let them go out, let them have our little, be together somewhere else, but not in Clay County. I don't want them here. I don't want them here in the first place, let alone intramilling with the good citizens in Clay County.
What about due process, when they serve their time?
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am?
I work in Bradford County, and out there, the sexual predators have a big, red, fat sign in their front yard with their name.